Yes, notary vacation please by our, our baby boys. And they have, uh, we will have, uh, all the changes by our I P P. And there, uh, I would also have my, uh, notary vacation. Do you have a regard to that? Do you have a, uh, some book with our, uh, yes, in our own? Yes, please, please, eleven, please, eleven, please, eleven. Okay. All right. If you count out, thirty, one, two, three, go. Inspire our women, let us glory as so he has we profess. To give me fight, our devitas, and saving selflessness. For fellowship, we share, we share, we offer thanks to be. We pray that it will be our guest who spread it from trusty. And I shall. Next, the four weeks, please, by our I P P.
The four weeks of things to say, for you, one, is it a choice? So, is it fair to work on sign, three, we will be moving on better friendships, four, we will be going up each other's time, four weeks.
Thank you, thank, uh, I P P, remember, may our treasure of this take the next one?
Good evening.
Are you possible tell us a page?
I don't think it's a page. Um.
The four of course. So we see all of them, yeah, should stick it as well.
I have some.
No, it's not, it's not in our songbook, so.
I'm, good evening, um, president, vice president, um, fellow veterans, uh, guests, um, the root of the founder. Those, as a veteran, I'm integrity and high ethical standards in professional and professional life. Giving caring with others and treating them and their occupation with respect. I will use my professional skills to recruit and mentor young people, help those with social needs, and improve people's quality of life, in community and in the world. Avoid, I will avoid behavior that reflects adversity or rotary of other veterans, and I would not seek special business or personal advantage from other veterans. The root for that.
Thank you, my airboat treasurer, our, our central bank. Please, may we, uh, help our, uh, sec, uh, notary secretary take the next one? Okay, I'll give it to you, so you understand, I go to. Oh, okay, good, can any of our, okay, please, may we have the past president of Bangana, uh, help us to take, um, the object of rotary? And we know, we don't have those, uh, okay.
No, we, we, we do it on the first page.
On the first page, please.
Um, sorry, page five.
Okay, page five. Have you heard of that? Page five. Object of rotary.
A veteran president, fellow veterans, and then guest of rotary. Object of rotary. The object of rotary is to encourage and foster the idea of service as basis of worthy enterprise, and in particular, to encourage and foster, one, the development of acquaintance as an opportunity for service. Two, high ethical standard in standard in business and professions. The recognition of worthiness of all useful occupation, and dignifying of each rotarian's occupation as an opportunity to serve society. The third one, the application of the idea of service in each rotarian's personal business and opportunity life. The fourth and the final one, can we take it together, please? They are want to go, they are vast of common social understanding, goodwill and deeds through the worship of this very precious business. In my time, the idea of service.
Thank you very much, thank you, you know, if you're proud of us all, if you're. Five, please, like your journey does here today. And we like, we all know that is an excellent, uh, of them, you know, to do as they are doing. On the next, we get, oh, yes, that's a, that's a prayer, see what, we, we'd never go to get her to also, uh, who take time to speak to us and give us the secretive information on what may be successful. So on the next item, we're going to take the rotary song. The rotary song, can we have the, our visiting rotarian as well, who is, uh, the project director for rotary, who are more vitriol at least. Are you for you to put it? A youth now, okay, youth now, uh, she's also one of my aunties. I call her Auntie Franca, uh, so, uh, may you, you take any of the songs and then we will join you. Thank you, Rotaria Franca. And she's also my sister, auntie, sister, yes, mentor, all of them. I just gave in and stopped, I saw her, this is. Oh, I thought you. No, 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 wow, wow, look like. Yes, that's good, that's good. Which would you take, ma'am?
Uh, let's, but, but I think, uh.
Maybe a lot of, uh. We have, uh, uh, how, actually, about one, we will have. Yes, uh, that was, uh, nineteen, day sixteen, sixteen, yes, day sixteen. Okay, I'll start it, we say, okay. So, so we are starting this, we are enjoying her. Our guest, uh, this, we see the love in rot, okay. Don't be, it's the. This is. Vivela Rotari. Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Truth is our heart, love is our mind. Vivela Rotari. Oh, the growing of my distance, you treat me. Vivela Rotari. Inspiring your business with true harmony. Vivela Rotari. Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Truth is our heart, love is our mind. Vivela Rotari. Who says my? Is my wake of smile is not below with me. Vivela Rotari. Who roses and sapphins are saving of green. Vivela Rotari. Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Vivela, vivela Rotari. Truth is our heart, love is our mind. Vivela Rotari. Thank you. Round of applause, a round of applause, uh, feeling good, you know, and there's no, we've seen that. Thank you very much, Rotaria Franca. I said, man, thank you very much. I think, uh, appointment of S A A, we will ask our airboats central bank to do S A A today, also, we have a, 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 a sergeant at arms. You know, so please, just for notification, uh, last, uh, Thursday, we had, uh, our airboat secretary do that for us. But while that is on, the next item of the agenda is dues, update on dues. May we have, uh, our central bank governor, our airboat treasurer, Rotaria. On the la, please tell us, give us update on that, thank you very much.
Thank you, President, I think we want to be, uh, producing to stand up. Um, so due to see so far, that today, we have due from fourteen veterans, which is a improvement compared to last week. I would encourage us to be coming, um, and allow us to dispay our dues. It's just, just a hundred thousand Naira. We understand that they follow me, might be tricky right now, and we hope that maybe for us to make up payments now and then come to payment later, so, I'm being there because, you know, that, although the ones who are still in the, obviously, the ones who want, who has given, uh, paid salary, uh, but hoping that we'll get more in total chest, um, this week, yeah, but yeah, um, that's pretty much the case, possibly so far. Um, the numbers are increasing, but the numbers can definitely be better. I will be, I'm worried so with D M's, um, but, um, I guess a lot of them, they do remind us, and then just talk to some of our less active veterans, so I think, and I'm getting off to need to fulfill our dues to Rotary International as well as to scope.
Thank you, uh, airboats C P A, Rotaria, on the la, thank you for that, and if I may add my voice like you did, uh, I'm, I'm thirty, we're currently thirty-five members, and, uh, we're pulling up to ensure that we, 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 yes, we pay our, uh, dues to the district as well as to Rotary International. Please, uh, a round of applause for our guest speaker, you know, uh, our guest speaker, Rotaria, Dr., uh, Jibunam, she's here. You know, so, uh, it's good to have you, ma'am, too, uh, not too bad. And we also have visiting rotarians from our sister and our newest, one of our newest baby, is that the newest baby that we have? The, uh, no, 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 our, our own, led by us, that is, Victoria Island is, we have the secretary in the house, and we also have, and the past treasurer, so we have C P A, uh, Victoria Island is, you know, they are the trending ones. We are the, we call them, they, they say they are the G S's, we are the old school.
They are not in G S anymore. Because they do, they are people back to V T C.
That, that is good. That is, uh, 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 oh, you know, that is good.
So, that means we are grandfathers.
Yeah, we are now grandparents. What, what, what would you answer about, uh, the, the, what is, like, of, you better know, uh, sixty-five? What are we going to call them? Well, it was in four, right? Now you're thirty-nine, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, so you're welcome, you're welcome, thanks for joining us today. One more item now, we've had the option dues, one half update on the island mortality. I guess I'll take that, uh, due to, I mean, due to strike, we're meant to receive. But, uh, the nurses have decided to dodge. So, we also decided to hold back whenever the call. Who are receiving that item? Please, uh, can we, uh, have update on right now? My airboat secretary will take that as, uh, the youth, uh, director is not on sick, he called in, uh, sick, you know, it's under the weather, so, please, by, uh, airboat secretary.
My dear president.
Thank you, thank you.
Um. Fellow Ukrainians, guests and friends of rotary, pardon me. Um, well, we have successfully, um, sent two rotaractors to the district for the screening, uh, for Rila program. So when they last, uh, as, yes, we, before fifteen M, we were informed by the district that the, the names had been proposed. And we think that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, my airboat secretary, Rotaria, Akambi, nice to have you, John Barbat. I was pretty bored, you know, uh, I was also ever speaking to the, the team lead, uh, yesterday. He was pretty, uh, myself and, uh, he was pretty happy, and what we are doing right. So on the next item, now it's, uh, matters relating to, it is, not this one, this one, yes. Okay, our airboat secretary will also handle this government matter, uh, thereafter, we will handle that, uh, we will be to introduce our guests.
My president, fellow Ukrainians, uh, guests and friends of rotary, uh, this one is just a month away. It may look very far, please, our registration in terms of, uh, club members, wait, but it's called next year, it's not very encouraging. Uh, the chairman of the, I'm a member of the, uh, this con twenty twenty-six committee. I have the privilege of saying those that are registered, we have not done enough, please, we need to encourage one another.
What's this concern?
What's this? District conference, sorry, district conference.
Where is it?
It's coming up next year, May.
Okay.
Next year.
Why, why, why do I have to go to this?
Because we need to interact, to actually know the various forms within the district. You need to interact, you need to meet people, you need to know the essence of rotary. Because this one will provide you the opportunity to know, to know what rotary is all about. Some of us are basically interested in going for international conference, like the one that was held in the, uh, Canada, recently, the. You understand, but the fact is this, like my president said earlier, charity begins at home. We need to do this at home, let's represent the rotary of Victoria Island. Let people know that, yes, we are the crest of rotary, please.
Where the free rate, where we represented in the last one.
Yes, last, last, the last this one, we stood out, we stood out because our project, when we had, uh, uh, data, the latest, you know, people had to come to consult and, you know, had their, their ticks cleaned and, you know, so it was a major event that a lot of people were looking up and are still looking forward to it. Please, be part of the movement, yes. Yes, yes, please, come on, you need to be part of this, don't allow people to tell those who are telling you. You know, some of, some of our members, they will almost to live with, even to, to like that, this, but, thank God, she's here today. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
As long as someone you need, you know, why are you smiling?
Okay, thank you, I, Rotaract secretary, what can I come be, our airboat secretary, without, uh, there will not be any sitting today, because it's the airboat, uh, secretary of the club. Ladies and gentlemen, without, um, much ado, the reason why we are out there and here and not a reason why we're not there, the lecture relating to maternal and child health topic, uh, that, that will be taken today by our vice president, our, and also our past assistant governor. The introduction of Dr. Olaika Jibunam will be done by him, our guest speaker, that will be done by our airboat VP, please. Uh, airboat VP, VP, I have, I hear the thought to you.
Thank you, our president, fellow Ukrainians and guests, um, in the house, um. I want to introduce our guest speaker, and I want to respectfully ask her to be outstanding so that all can see you. You know, they're popular, they're some television, and CNN as well. And she's also a member of our club. Yeah, she is a member of this club. So, Dr. Olaika Jibunam, M S C D I C, so many, F W A C B, simply known as Dr. James. I didn't know that before. He's a consultant psychiatrist, rehabilitation psychologist, D M practitioner, health policy expert, and mental health advocate, based in Lagos, Nigeria. She is an alumna of the prestigious Queens College, Q C, yeah, diversity of Lagos, and, thank you for talking. Because last week, some great people were trying to run through an example this college, the Imperial College, London, West African College of Residencies, Enterprise Development Center of the Panafrika University, and as the lecturer of the Cherry Blair Foundation Scholarship for outstanding female entrepreneurs, Google, also Academy, and the London Business School. With a career spanning two decades within the public and private sector, she founded a health tech startup called the Studiyan Center, which has pioneered the use of virtual reality therapy for mental health care and additional services in capacity, drug and alcohol, gambling treatment services, employee and family assistance support group, and mental health care for all the groups, including the child and adolescent population. She's an active member of the Institute of Directors, Nigeria, also a psychiatrist in Nigeria, American Psychiatric Association, World Federation of Analytic Psychiatrists, the International Society of Scotts, who is a professional and treatment professional. She's active on social media, uh, and use, uh, again, and that's called send down Instagram, some Twitter, like Facebook. A research work includes, uh, the control clinical trial, a group cycle educational intervention for anxiety among preschool adolescents in Nigeria, international calendar of mental health. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me, I invite Dr. James. Dr. James, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Tonight is the big battle of lost art in food, because the very first time, my very first time to on rotary was because I gave it to the traditional, I did that once, so I gave representation, I generally, asking my way was on board in that center, and then it was like, look, I have to come and teach my rotary to the station, I want to be, not to come, and then I came, that's the rotary. I came and gave a presentation, and I got the meeting, then, now, join us. And that's how I give it here, thank you, thank you very much, I really do. So today I've chosen a topic that we don't talk about often, you know, when, when my president called me, he said, let's talk about this pattern depression, because that's why we talk about, we talk about maternal and childhood, but there's more to maternal and childhood than, uh, this pattern depression. So I wanted to highlight something that we don't talk about often, it's called attachment status. And it's a concept in psychology that has a lot to do with our relationships. So for quite a number of us that are already parents and grandparents, you talk to your children, you will not marry your daughter, you've not got a wife, you've not got a husband. What's wrong with you, you know, you get like that, you keep troubling the child, you don't know that the decisions that that child is making at this age now, had a lot to do with the attachment to that parent on the first day of life, and even the first five days of life. So I want to, I want to open your mind a bit today and get us to talk about how, when we raise our children, the very first day of life, how we raise our infants, and play a big role in how their relationship turn out in later life. I was hoping we could project this, I can't project this, I go, I will share my life.
I've also sent, uh, the, to everyone, so if you go to the, uh, club stuff, you can also download the, uh, the slide.
So the very, most important thing of your person's life, the first year of life, from birth to your first birth. And the kind of care you receive at that stage is a big one, how you like. This care, I want to talk about the care, we're talking about what a newborn child needs, that has to do with feeding, you know. Children, newborn babies cry for several reasons, and it's not more than feeding, when their mommy will cry. When the nap is wet, maybe they change, they also cry, and sometimes they just want to be suited, you know, they just want to to take them and cuddle them, and then they cry, but we find that those are just very basic needs that infants have. But some parents are not able to meet these needs based on maybe circumstances around the birth of the child. If the child was unwanted, or if there are economic issues, or if there are certain mental health issues going on in the house, or whatever. So many issues can arise, and then you find that the attachment figure is not very present. And also in our society, we usually lean on nannies, so in our culture, higher nannies take care of the child. There's this thing where people hire several nannies, so within the child's first five years of life, if turned over, maybe twenty nineties, that also has an effect on the child. We talk about the primary caregiver, every child has one main person they see as the primary caregiver, and then others are support. So it could be the mom that is very present, maybe if they stay at home, that's very present, that child sees as the number one caregiver, and every other person is support. Or it could even be that nanny, because the nanny is always present, picks up the child from school, and also when you find that when you change, when you change your nannies, it also has an effect on the child's attachment style, and they're, they're building a big more as we progress. So in terms of attachment, you know, we're very, we are very particular about how, uh, in infant, in infant, you're very particular about how near the, the caregiver is. Do you feel like when you cry for help, the, the person is nearby and can respond to you very quickly, that's one. How accessible is the care as well, when, in, in that infancy stage, and then how attentive is the caregiver? Some caregivers are nearby, they are accessible, but they are not attentive. So you can have a parent who is absent minded, then body will not be in mind, or in our social media, then body goes, totally on the phone, and you're not really catering to the child. Those three, those three issues, you bring up problems with the children, and then in later life, we see that this can impact the individual self-esteem. Just something as basic as not changing the diaper as quickly as you should, or not feeding the child as quickly as you should. So I'm going to differentiate what, what we describe as needs versus wants. And I'm not talking about wants, wants are nice to have, you know, and needs are must haves. So needs are, uh, right to feeding, and right to care, the basic things like, we also have education, those little things that everyone needs to survive, those are needs. But wants are the nice to have, so the extra pair of shoes, or, uh, extra PlayStation, or whatever, those are wants, we're not talking about wants. We're talking about basic needs. Now, if we're able to tend to the basic needs of these children in early, early in childhood, you find that it helps self-esteem or the love of. It also helps them build trust for others. A lot of times we see people in adulthood who say, oh, I don't trust anybody, find that they actually do not trust you. And it's not something that started in adulthood, it actually started on the first day of life, and then you find that it impacts future relationships as well. So the way we care for these children in that early stage also has an effect on their future relationships. And when I say future relationships, I'm talking about how quickly they turn over partners. So you get people that are always, their relationships are always tumultuous, or always heated or toxic, and it just seems to be a repeated pattern, it has a lot to do with attachment style. You find people that can't keep a relationship for whatever reason, it has to, even marriages as well, you know. These, these issues are linked to infancy and the way we were cared for in our early life. So I, uh, projected a worksheet, because I wanted each one of us to assess our own personal attachment style. So, I projected a worksheet because I wanted each one of us to assess our own personal attachment style. For my President, I thought I would need to. So, I'm going to skip that part, but I was hoping that I could get each one of us to just run through this test and check our own style. And irrespective of whatever style will come up with you, you know that it's really not your fault, you know? It's really not your fault, it's body, it's so, it gives you an idea of what kind of early childhood period you have. One, one of the, I see, so I mean, our patients working for therapy. Sometimes people come in and they want to look good, you know, you're asking them about their childhood. They're painting such a beautiful picture. Oh, I had this, I was born into this, wet, this, wet, this, wet. But when you gauge your relationship pattern in the adulthood, you see some faults. And, and the cycle of, let, let you know that this person is obviously hiding. As much as they make it look so rosy and so, yeah, they might have money, money doesn't mean that just because there was money in the house doesn't mean that the person got the care that they needed. So, the patient's parent might be absentee parent, they're dead, they're body, they're absent in man or they're neglectful, you know, they're not meeting the child's needs. When children go to us, they want to cuddle, they want to hug, those are moments when they want to be suited, you know? But you find some parents might push them away in that moment. And those are the little things we're talking about. So, not just, oh, you have paid your school, you go to the very best school. Your, a man was not, when the boy wants to cry, say, a man was not crying. A man must be strong, but those are the little things, those are the little issues we sow into children's minds, which become hardcore schemers and then they show up in adulthood or later life and become problematic for them in, in the society. So, I'll, I'll ask my President to please share the, the worksheet with everyone so that you can on your own, just to self-assess. So, now I'm going on to the attachment style. Welcome. I don't know if I say my prayer, I say my prayers and my prayers of my five years.
No, no, because you are speaking, I'm going to introduce her. Please, the roundabout post for our EPO President of the United Nations. I do have to notice, A K E S R.
So, now in terms of attachment style, we have two major categories. We have secure attachment and insecure attachment. Now, secure attachment is a word in lies, you know, the very, the child that has been well suited, well taken care of, needs well, um, um, needs well met. And the child goes to trusting. Now, when I say trusting, I'm not talking about two roles and two trusting and, you know, that's not what. To an extent, the, the, the one that needs to be warm and they know when to hold back. But you just see that in terms of relationships, they're more steady, their approach in relationships is more steady. They're able to keep long-term relationships and it's not toxic, it's not heated, you know, it's just steady. So, that's of course secure attachment. But within the insecure category, we have three major types of insecure attachment. So, we have anxiously attached, as a word in lies. These are individuals that are anxiously attached. So, what you find in this world, the commonly loose term that a lot of people we used to describe as anxiously attached person is clingy. I don't know if you guys are aware, they say, oh, she's so clingy. She calls me fifteen times a day, you know, she checks, she's always calling me fifteen, twenty missed calls, fifteen missed calls, you know? So, many say, she's always asking me, asking me if I love her, ask me fifteen times, am I love her? Do you love me, do you love, but I love you now, the one was there asking more again, do you still love me, do you still love me? So, you find that because some people do not torment, do not understand, they see that as a problem. They don't see that that is the woman's attachment style, it's not a problem. That's just the beauty. So, in that kind of, if you find yourself in that kind of situation, the ideal thing to do is to reassure the person. We assure the person as many times as you need to. It's not a crime, it doesn't mean she's crazy or she's mad or whatever. That's just how.
So, it's not just that, if I don't know, I'm married.
Just say, just say, there's nothing wrong with this, I love you one million times. It's fine, but you know that before she's. Sorry?
You're serious.
Uh, so, now depends on your own attachment style. So, if you are securely attached, you won't mind telling her a billion times how much you love her. You would go the extra mile to show her how much you love her. But I'll talk about the other styles, which are, now if you belong to the other styles, you would, you would be vexed every time she asks you that question, like, this woman, you're frustrating me. How many times have you asked me this question? I mean, that's a point that to the fact that you belong to one of the other categories as well. So, that's anxiously attached, very clingy, very anxious. You go out, you, you go out online, she's calling you several times, you say you are okay. But did you enter that million? You know, we have women like that in our lives, we've experienced women like that. Men can also be like that. You know, they're telling you, remember I used to give someone one time, they say, people, you go send me a picture, send me a picture of you, ah, wherever you are, send me a picture of your, your, what you cause I pity you or whatever. That is a bit, that is a bit too anxious, a bit too extreme. So, that's, that's, that's what we call anxiously attached type. Now, we have what we call avoidant attachment. Avoidant as a word in lies. Avoid, the natural, or the first approach in relationships is to build a wall. So, you get into a relationship, but you don't want to be too close, you're already at the boundary. So, if you have a girlfriend that comes to visit you, maybe told like, only come Mondays and Tuesdays because on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I just want to be by your station, you know? So, you find that you try to what, you retreats from time to time and it's like, you don't want to love too much. I think like, most of our African women are funny this category. So, you're trying not to love too much, you give smaller and they say, no, 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 just stay back and read and give me my space, you know? And imagine that kind of person being that anxiously attached person. The anxious attached person is trying to, you know, cuddle, try to love, try to love up. Meanwhile, the avoidant is pushing you back. So, that's why it's not surprising to see relationships where anxiously attached people and avoidant people come together, quite toxic, quite okay. Because one is seeking for love and affection, the other one is pushing the other person maybe. And you find that it becomes a struggle. So, I just, I just want to open your mind to the fact that when we see a lot of these toxic relationships, sometimes or a lot of times it's linked to attachment. And if people become even more aware, you know, there's some things that we complain about, we, we fight about that we won't fight about, we just accept them, that's how the person is, or even make the person even more aware, the person is able to modify the behavior. Then the worst of all is what we call disorganized attachment style, which is a bit extreme. So, I, I should have, I'll take a bit of, so in terms, in anxiously attached people, the cause of that, the cause of the anxious, the anxious attachment is that in that early infancy and childish phase, the care was inconsistent. So, I'll give an example, a child is six months old, needs to eat or needs to change. Sometimes the caregiver will show, sometimes they won't show. So, imagine like a housewife taking care of a child, she changed the napkin twenty minutes ago. The child is crying and she's like, I beg, I beg, I beg, I beg. It's actually twenty minutes ago. And so, it's inconsistent. So, with that inconsistency, the child doesn't know when you are coming, doesn't know whether you show up at this one, you don't show up at this one, it brings anxiety. And you can see that anxiety already starts to grow from such an early state that just follows the individual's whole life. For avoidant, it's a bit, what you find in that situation is a bit more severe than, um, inconsistency. You find neglect in quite a number of avoidant situations. So, you find that in those kind of situations, the needs are not even being met. So, baby can be in bed and cry for hours, you know? Cry, you know, some babies will cry for two hours, sleep off, wake up, cry. Nobody is attending to the child's care. Need to as, as, as irrelevant to, or, you know, as relevant as it sounds, that plays a very, very big role in the way the, the child's first response goes, in the way the child sees relationships and so many other things. Now, talking about disorganized attachment style, that is a bit more extreme because it has a lot to do with facing certain types of trauma in early childhood. So, we don't discuss why cares, the traumatic situations, experiencing physical abuse in the house or even being physical abused themselves, sexual abused or any sort of abuse. Probably neglect and those kind of adverse situations can then lead uh, the person to develop what we call the disorganized type of attachment, which is what we call disorganized. So, this kind of situations, the person in relationships, they want to connect, they want the relationship, but you find that they're giving mixed signals in relationships. So, if they draw the person, they meet a girl, they talk to the girl, they want, they, they put. You notice that, okay, where are we going, they doesn't even know where they are going. Today you are set together, tomorrow you are broken up, tomorrow you are back together, it's so, uh, it's organized, you know? And it's not even just in romantic relationships, they also find it in other kinds of issues. So, in the workplace, trying to build relationships in the workplace is a bit rocky. Today, they trust this person, tomorrow they don't trust this person, you know, so it's, you just find that relationships are just really rocky and they don't know why they're like that. But now I'm letting you know that it's because of the way they were raised in, within the first five years of life. So, when they share this life, we'll be able to see, um, other characteristics of each, um, attachment style. In conclusion, I just want us to know that a lot of issues that we see in relationships, I listen on the video, I get a group call on the video and they ask for advice, they say this, they say that. A lot of issues we face in relationships are really tied to attachment. You know, people are really not as difficult as we create them out to be. A lot of issues are tied to attachment and the more aware we are, the easier it becomes to manage our trust. That's why I wanted each one of us to assess ourselves. So, wherever you see yourself, wherever you find yourself, it's also important to know that you can also modify it. So, you can, you can, you could have been raised as an anxious avoidant, an anxious, anxiously attached person. But then when you become a bit more circle, where you can actually improve on yourself and become a bit more securely attached. And someone could have also been raised as securely attached and gotten into several tumultuous and, uh, reliant relationships and all kinds of nonsense through life and then develop maybe anxiously attached or avoidant. Imagine someone that had gone through several breakups, now becoming avoidant, I'm sure you can relate to that. You know, someone having their heart broken so many times that they get to a point where they're like, okay, I'm putting a wall, you know, no more, no bad emotions in my life, no more. No good thing in my life, you know? So, it, you know, you can understand that it can happen. But it's, what is, the, the important thing that we need to take home today is that it is modifiable. So, when we see someone like that, get them to be a bit more aware and let them understand that there's something that can be modified, it can improve on their relationships and lead to more successful lives. So, thank you very much.
Dr. James, thank you very much for that, for that presentation. I tell you, there's a lot that you just need to. But I believe that we can take a few questions. We still have about five more minutes to deal. So, if you have questions, please can you just raise up your hand, we'll call you and then we'll address it. But I, I also believe that there's not enough time, you know, to actually delve into this. So, um, you, if you, Dr. James is here, you can meet her, get her, uh, handle so that you can have a session. As a reference, Dr. James, I'm cooking a session. I think I'm on the avoidant spectrum, okay? So, please, um, if you have questions, please kindly ask her right now and then we can treat it. Any questions, anything else right now? Nobody, everybody's scared and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, Dr. James, that was quite interesting. But now if what you have described appears to the House of Normal from law, is there, is there therapy for correction?
Yes. Well, if that's yourself awareness, you have to be aware of your style first and then have a one to shift, you have to intentionally avoid one from that style to be secure. That's only the two major categories. So, the ones I described, the anxious, the avoidant, the disorganized are all insecure. So, once a person is identified as insecure, you have to intentionally want to shift from being insecure to secure. And then that's where the work comes in. So, it's all tied around building self-esteem, being emotionally intelligent, you know? Learning to manage the emotions in those moment. So, an anxiously attached person that is tempted to call twenty times, you know, give twenty missed calls. Once you get them to be a bit more avoidant, twenty missed calls in the, it's a bit psycho, you know? Get them to understand, instead of being fast, because if it didn't come from the therapist, if it came, if it came into the relationship, that part of it, you see the person as crazy and treat the person as crazy. So, if it's coming from a therapist where you're not there for the person to see that twenty missed calls, they have to leave. It becomes, you know, you call once, call twice. So, they, then they learn that, then they go back and they practice in real life. And then the more they practice, the better they become in relationships.
Let's go. Okay, so, if I had to, if I had to speak, no, sorry, uh, it's not about, I believe on one, can you be on the two?
Possible, you can.
Are we secure and avoidant? That I believe.
No.
It's not possible?
No.
Really?
I have all one.
Okay. And a multiple personality.
That's the, that's the.
Okay, we'll discuss that next question.
Uh, thank you, Doctor. Would you suggest that people who are in marriage and then go, uh, some.
A second analysis?
Psychiatric or psychological evaluation? Give you the background that you said, because what we typically hear is if they're interested, do manage counseling. If they're out there and talk about financial, they have a good. But what, what you have shown like that sometimes, what we judge people for, I mean, what we judge people for are not actually their faults. Uh, the second thing I want to ask is, is it possible based on their experience, it's not just that they're most good people? Do people actually change? From a perspective, I'm a lawyer, I'm a ten meter, they believe someone says that people don't change. So, maybe you can draw your supposition, uh, between, let's say, you say this part, the avoidant person and that he wrote to come full this or just a slight marginal improvement. I hope I'm not confused.
So, the truth is that in terms of treatment, counseling, really not enough. Like you said, when we go to counselors, counselors give advice. But what they said, they say, oh, for your son by this time, they're just advising. What if you went to see, nowadays with the younger generation, the Gen Zs, they actually come to the psychologists, they do personality assessments, they assess their personality, see if they are crashing or not, how can they comply? They check their love language, you know, they check how they want to be loved and how they're right. So, those are things that are very, this information, this knowledge has come with time. Because we need to go to all the information and ten years ago. It's been the work of lots of research over the past decade, you know? And now there are those that really get to them free from it. But truly, first counseling is not enough, you know? There needs to be self-assessment and then they're trying to see how you can merge both sides. When you assess one, you assess the other and see how they can come together and complement each other. And that will once the knowledge will from the start, it's easier to navigate through the relationship from the long term. Second question.
Yeah, so people, people are very moved for us.
So, in terms of change, for you to change, there's a lot of work that needs to be done by the individual. It has a lot to do with you being, being and ready to fight for your demons. But the truth is that a lot of people are not ready to. We see all people are, they feel they are wired, they're setting them be, my brother was wired that because just allow me to continue to learn. But the people that really don't change, that people that, uh, that really do live successful lives are people that are big on self-development. So, you have a very introspective person, from time to time, you evaluate yourself and see how you're doing as an individual. You know, so when you do that from time to time, you're able to see, you can even see your own flaws and work on your flaws and you find that as time progresses, you become a better person. So, it really has a lot to do with introspection and being self-aware and being willing to do the work. When people come for therapy, they feel therapy, just tell me what to do. You know, therapy, but therapy is not just tell me what to do. It tells you, well, you have to go and work on it and do what you want and prepare to be different. So, Mr. A and Mr. B, and those come for therapy, he works for A, but they don't work for B. Because B told her I'm not doing anything about it. So, that's.
Can I ask?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We are going to continue today, but these are the rules of road trip, we must never be too short. Thereafter, we are still here for a bit, so you can ask other questions that you want to ask.
I'll let you check, we'll give you.
No, no, no worries. By the power of God, I'll start to change. It's a general, she will still give you a national one hour. So, please, um, the other matters we want to attend to now is a toast and a toast being uh, led by our EPO I P P, who is he, I think he's still around. Uh, my EPO I P P, please kindly toast, uh, the house. We have a lot of, uh, we, we, yes, yes, we have a lot of, uh, uh, visiting Rotarians. So, first we will, uh, do introductions of, of them. We have, uh, the, uh, past president of Rotary Club of, uh, Magada here. Okay, so please, uh, they will also introduce themselves, kind of visiting Rotarians. Kindly introduce, uh, themselves to the house. Thank you very much, we appreciate you. And we'll start with, uh, our, uh, past president, uh, Metacar, right?
Okay, I'm a Rotarian, a Rotarian, uh, yes. My name is Oyubu Mabadi, a Rotarian from Rotary Club of Magada. Past president, hope he sealed this. Past president, Hope, he's sealed District seven one zero. Um, classification is little monkey and, uh, it's a pleasure to be.
The last one, the, uh, United, United for Good President of, uh, Victoria Land East, our helpful, uh, can you introduce yourself now?
My name is Hillary President, hello, the chairman, the guest. My name is Rotary, who cares you who are, and I am the president of the Rotary Club of Victoria Island East. My classification, good practice and I'm very pleased to be here, thank you.
We also have, uh, other visiting Rotarians, we have the secretary, yes, please, uh, kindly introduce yourself.
I'm the Rotary President, Rotary. Um, yes, um, I am the Secretary of the Rotary, uh, Secretary of Victoria Island East. Classification, good practice, thank you.
We have, we have talked about, uh, my helpful secretary, uh, you have a colleague here. And, uh, okay, so who else is visiting us, please may you introduce yourself.
All right, good evening, my president, fellow Rotary members. My name is, uh, Joey, I'm from the Rotary Club of Victoria Island East. Uh, we find Rotary around the globe and my classification, we took right to the next place.
Sorry, I'm a member, my name is Charlie, I was from, uh, to, uh.
Victoria Island?
Gift. Gift.
We have this, Victoria, yeah. We must put the gift.
Gift.
Very good.
So I'm in cheer, I'm trying, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, people, we have, uh, you saw, we try, we try a lot this and, uh, you know, I pray for the Rotary, the Rotary. Yes, please.
My, uh, president, I'm the fellow Rotarian.
One house, please.
My name is, uh, Rotary, I'm a member.
One house, please.
Uh, classification, learning and development.
So, uh, uh, Dr. Jips, I guess the plan for you today, you can see from all into that class, half of the people that are here are here based on your, your, your trends. Yes.
Please, any other visiting Rotarians, president, I will introduce my guest. Yes, we're here, I'm the Rotarator, uh, I'm a member of the, um, from the Rotary Club of Victoria Island. Uh, specification is events and, um, regular quality events.
Thank, thank you, my, uh, your love, my, any other visiting Rotarians here? Oh, yes, okay, thank you very much. And so with that, uh, yes, with that, our, uh, uh, secretary will introduce, uh, yes. They've been introduced already, that's the last thing. They've been introduced, yes. Yeah, okay, they are not, no, they are not, they are, they are.
Introduction is amazing.
Okay, please, let's, let's give it to you. Okay, please, let's, uh, we'll introduce, okay, I'll tell you what.
My name is Henry Sude, who did name, uh, the president and president. My name is Henry Sude and, uh, you can use your terms. Okay, I have guests, uh, and then classification, that's what I wanted, I was looking for that. Classification law.
Good evening, my friends, thank you. Rotary, my name is Dominic, I don't bother, I will be classified as a lawyer.
Okay. Your guests, please kindly. Okay, good evening, yes, good evening, Rotary President, Rotary.
Uh, my name is, this is, this is my first time after any of the road trips.
Oh, lovely.
The person so far, uh, classification, I'm a lawyer.
I will, I will bring my club, so that you can join the club, right? Thank you. Any other one for your guests, please, like you said.
I believe it's president, uh, Rotary. Uh, this is my, uh, my candidate, who's represented. Last two weeks ago, I attended the Queen's and I, it was my second time, I will retire to my doctor. My name is Don Soaz, uh, I'm a lawyer as well. I hope you love it.
Thank you, thank you.
He's going to drive me. Yeah.
No, but I'm also driving.
Please, I've been there.
Victoria, Victoria. But we get better than that. So you can, so we must take, we will take rest, yes. So thank you, thank you very much, all of you, and so, we appreciate that. I will hand over to my, we begin to thank you one more time for, for, yes, what are you saying? You, you said it. Yes, you said it. Okay, let me just, um, yeah, our president, thank each and everyone of you. Hello, Rotarians, thank you for sharing the mission and our guests. Um, we hope that, uh, very soon we will be talking and so that we can, um, start to address you as Rotarians as well. Did you see I should? Yes. Okay, so I want to respectfully ask each and everyone across the world, have this toast. Let's have a toast to the Rotary Club of Magada. Rotary Club of Victoria, Anan East.
Oh, Magadans.
And the Brutal Club of, of Jewish Shagat. Brutal Club of.
Jewish Shagat.
Any other club? Let's toast to the Club of Victoria Island.
First of all, we.
Also toast to this wonderful organization that brought us together, the only organization that has of Zara, of Zara's status.
Yes.
Rotary International, Rotary World. We hope to see you. Again, again. You want to go with Curisum?
No, but we don't trust.
I know, that's why you put through. Wow, that is, they would take international. Let's start with the Rotary, which is, I don't think, uh, what's the biggest? Four, big step, big step, I don't have a big step, which step? If you don't have, let me give that to you. One, two, three, big step, please. One, two, three. So please kindly come together, let's go, we are a group of people. But we still have, can we let's take pictures together, let's spread them out here. And then we cannot ask the questions we want to ask to Dr. Jips now that we've officially been in. Please feel free to say down, have a preach, you know, and all of that, but let's take pictures first. And we forgot, S A A, oh, please, while we are, no, while we are, you can, you can, you can give it our all, you can collect that. Okay, thank you very much.
Rest in peace.
Yes.
Rest in peace.
Rest in peace. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. We just want to, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have. That's how I saw you was that, uh, yes, yes. My first thing, yeah, yeah, as well as. They don't read it, uh, but we still have read it. You know, so, so, let, let's see like that.